Hey Patrick.
Hey Brian.
So I was using the agenda that was on the town website. The link wasn't, it was going to a previous meeting from two weeks ago. Because there was definitely a different meeting ID than the one you sent me. I mean, I and hopefully this email that you sent, I just didn't do it through there, but.
I had, you can see on the one that I sent, it had everybody's
Yeah.
address on there. I hope that's okay for people.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about like public that's not on this email.
Yeah.
How have you been?
Hey, okay. We had the holiday yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's always a little hinky to have a holiday the day before a planning board meeting. Things kind of get built up, you know, and
Yep.
details. Sometimes go awry. Hey, Don.
Good day. How are you?
Good there. Brian Stein, this is Don Preston.
Done.
Habitat for Humanity.
Nice to meet you.
Hello.
Hi Casey, I'm Patrick. How are you?
Hi, it's nice to meet you.
Who is well.
Virtually.
Thanks for being interested in the planning board.
Hi Casey, I'm Brian. I'm the chair.
Hi Brian, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. How are you doing Bill?
I'm vaccinated, so that's good. Much better than I was a year ago this time.
That is good.
I got my second on Friday of last week. So, yeah, it's like you feel like you've met a milestone once you get that out of the way.
You have any effects?
Yeah, it was sore.
Yeah, I had none. I was sleepy for a day or two, but.
Hey Rick.
Howdy.
I'm gonna rename you Rick.
Oh no, I'm gonna rename me.
We need a couple more members to have a quorum.
Bill, what's white nitro?
Oh, it's, it's a double black diamond trail of sugar.
You lost your, there you go.
I was overpracticed going down at one time and I did it mostly on my butt, so.
Do we want to tag a couple of our planning board members?
Hey Megan.
Hello.
Hey Cory.
Cory?
I guess.
Almost didn't recognize you.
I can put a hat on if you need.
Still need one more member.
Yeah, I'm gonna call Marnie. I think she was just trying to call me if she might have trouble getting on, so.
The agenda had a meeting code that said the sixth, so I can do the email from.
Yeah.
I was stuck outside for a little bit, waiting for a meeting on the sixth.
All right, hold on a second.
Is anybody contacting you saying they can't get on Patrick?
Richard just called me and told me that. So I sent him and Marty and Bill the invite that I sent out a couple of weeks ago.
So I do have a concern that if the agenda had the wrong link, then the public won't have everything, or they won't be able to get on.
I think I'm on.
Yep, you're on.
Oh, I'm on. Okay, I got on. Thanks. Sorry to bother you. Bye. I had some technical difficulties.
Yeah, I think I had the wrong link on there, Marty.
Oh, no problem. I'm here now.
So we have a quorum. Is Richard trying to get on?
Yes, he'll be here. He's there right now.
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, hey Richard.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
Put some water, I'll be right back.
Okay, let's, I guess we can get started. I will open up the April 20th, 2021 meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. I'm Brian Stein, the chair. On our agenda tonight, we have a conceptual review and discussion of a proposed 40B project from Essex County Habitat for Humanity at 434 to 438 Asbury Street. We also have the same conceptual review of another 40B proposal from Harbor Lake Community Partners at 455 Asbury Street, across the street. We have other board business, so we'll be interviewing at least one associate member tonight, potential associate member, and looking at approving minutes and other items. So Patrick, can you, just for the rest of the Borgs, I don't think anyone of us has done a 40B review. Maybe Rick did years ago, but I don't believe the rest of us have. Just kind of tell us what, in the public, what our responsibility is in this. Most of it falls on the zoning board, but we, I believe, have a cursory review, kind of a site plan review, but could you just kind of run us through that process, please?
Yeah, by, by mass general law, 40B projects need to be the purview of the zoning board of the field. They are the permit granting authority for 40B projects. However, 40B projects and lift projects, which are sort of 40B light projects, and those are my terms, but they are projects that come before also the zoning board, but the zoning board refers these plans to other entities like the planning board, like the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, for their input as well as town and city staff members. So the duty of the planning board in this respect is to provide a set of recommendations to the ZBA relative to the site plan review. It isn't to get into the financials, it isn't to get into, you know, the interior kind of fit up, those sorts of things that a ZBA would focus on, but it's specific to the site plan. It's kind of like a site plan approval or a Dover Amendment Review Project, which the planning board reviews and looks at rudimentary site plan elements. So, you know, that's the real focus of the planning board.
Great, thank you Patrick.
Let me also mention that Andrew DeFranzo had a scheduling issue. He had told us a couple of days ago that he needed to be before the planning board at the May 4th meeting, since he couldn't make this week. He and his newly betrothed are on a honeymoon this week.
Great. Thank you. So who will be presenting the plan tonight for Habitat for Humanity?
It'll be Don Preston with Habitat and Megan O'Neill, who is the Executive Director of Essex County Habitat for Humanity.
Great. Yeah, feel free to start your presentation.
Great. Don and I will tag team this a little bit. He's done all of the work leading up to this point and I'm the Johnny come lately. Our organizations just merged a few months ago, so we'll tag team our way through this. Patrick, I don't know, is it possible to do a screen share of the plans or do you, I have them up if you want to let, if you want me to screen share or I'm happy to just talk it through if everybody has the plans in front of them. What, what works best, Brian?
I think if you could screen share, that'd be great. That way we can kind of, you know, see the same thing at the same time and.
All right.
Patrick will give you that option.
I think I have the action. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So hopefully this is a fairly simple plan for your committee to review. What we're looking at doing is building 10 homes. So if you go from, this is Asbury Street out in front here, can you see as I move the hand? Yeah, okay, great. This is the long driveway that is there currently, and have people been out to this site? Are you familiar with this site? I'm seeing some nods and some not so much. Okay. So there is an old falling apart home, let's see, where's the falling apart home? Right here now that will be demolished and we'll be putting in 10 homes. There are, these are each one bedroom units, single story, so there's four total one bedroom units, two total two bedroom units, and four total three bedroom units. We're going to be reconfiguring the driveway so that there's an easy in and out. We haven't yet met with the fire department, but we're scheduling to meet with them and make sure that they're all happy with being able to get their trucks in and out here. The septics are located right in this area and this area. And so this is really set well back from the street. It will have minimal impact, I think, on the neighborhood and will be really some nice quality affordable housing in town in a scale that really fits in the neighborhood. And I'm happy to talk through any questions that you have or Don, if you want to jump in and add anything there.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Megan, could you just point out where the cell tower is on your map for everyone?
This is where the cell tower is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead, I apologize.
That's okay. And I was out there today and saw two, two colors of flags in different places. And I also saw the, I'm gonna call it a steam shovel, but it's not a steam shovel. The digging, you, big digging tool.
Okay.
What do the colored flags mean? What do they represent?
Alright, so there's a whole series of flagging on the site. So one is the wetlands. So right all the way down to the wetland area, you would see that whole area delineated.
What color flags are those, please?
I couldn't tell you. I believe they were a pinkish or an orangish.
Yeah, there's, there's pink and orange, I think.
Yep, and, but those are all flags from engineers. They could be some, they've come and gone, they change with each group that goes out there. They did the topography and all of that. So this, this lot was one lot at one time. In back in 2014, they subdivided it into three lots, lots one, two, and three.
Can you show those on the, can you show those?
Lot one is up here and we're acquiring that one.
And that lot has an existing house on it, which is currently for sale.
Yeah.
And then we're looking at lot two and lot three, right here.
And you said there was a house that you're gonna tear down?
Yes, it's shown right here in the lighter gray.
Okay.
So you would have seen that house. It's, it's deteriorated.
Yeah, I think I did see it.
And yep.
A little knoll or something?
Yes. It may tear itself down if given much more time, I think.
Wind might blow it down too.
Right. Or one of the big pines.
Yeah.
And, and there is a right of way that goes all the way up into the cell tower.
Right, I saw, I was up there.
Yep, and that right of way is maintained throughout this.
Yeah.
So Habitat creates affordable housing for families in the 40 to 60% area of median income. So for a family of four, roughly it would be between 40 and 80,000 in income. We will also have a local preference on this, which means up to 70% of the units can be available for families that live, work, or go to school in the Hamilton-Wenham communities. All our homes meet Energy Star standards. We are planning at this point to have a zero barrier entry on all the homes so that if necessary, we could adapt it to the needs of a family.
Are these rent, are these rental units or are these for purchase?
These are homeownership units. So these really are starter homes for some families. They're, they're only eligible to first time home buyers. So, and the income range in our area is about 40 to $80,000.
And will this be a condominium type project or are they individually owned? Well, no, they're gonna have multiple families in each building, right?
Yes, yep. A condominium structure is what we typically do. Yep.
Have you obtained DHCD approval for the 70% local preference?
It's in the marketing plan. Yes, they approved that.
That's fabulous.
And where are you in terms of the, the process of getting financing and how far away is construction?
Well, we have to wait. At this point, it's before zoning, when we go before zoning, we're expecting to do that in June. And then there's an appeals process. All things being considered, we could be putting in some foundations in October.
So this is a DHCD and approved project?
It is already approved.
Yeah, okay.
And the Affordable Housing Trust has committed 400,000 towards the acquisition of the property and the Institution for Savings has given a commitment letter for the acquisition financing as well.
And if you start building in October or doing the foundations, then when do you expect completion by?
This project will take between three to four years. We're doing it in three phases. So we'll probably do two units in one and then the other three units in the second phase.
Okay.
And we're planning on probably the one bedroom units being constructed first.
Okay.
And.
Excuse me, do you intend to get occupancy permits for the buildings that are fully constructed prior to the total completion of the project?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's why we're planning on those two units. Because they'll be on one side of the driveway and should be open and easy to go. So that's the plan at this point.
Will you complete the whole driveway before the other three units go in?
The whole. It makes sense to do that, yeah. I would imagine that sequencing that would work.
Yeah, just so there's the full turnaround when the other two units are up and running.
Right.
I'm familiar with Habitat for Humanity as Chair, the Affordable Housing Trust, but Don, perhaps, or Megan, you could explain how the proposed homeowners are required to submit sweat equity with respect to these properties.
Absolutely. So instead of requiring a traditional down payment of cash, what Habitat does is we require our homeowners to perform what we call sweat equity. Essentially, they work alongside the volunteers who are building their home. So they perform 300 hours of volunteer time helping to build their home or otherwise helping the organization. And that volunteer time is an important part of the partnership model that Habitat has. We really focus on the model of a hand up, not a handout. And so this allows families who wouldn't otherwise be able to gather the money for a down payment to have a homeownership opportunity.
That's a pretty good hunk of time to
It is.
put in. That's, that's nice. How long period do they have to do that? And how long does it usually take to complete their building?
Well, I, I, I wish that I could say we were the world's fastest builders, but as Don just pointed out, it will probably take us several years to complete 10 homes. Typically, we do the homeowner selection in phases for a project like this. So we might just select the first homeowners for the first phase and then they would have the 12 to 18 months that it would take us to build their home to actually do the sweat equity.
Okay, that's really my question, the 18 months.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I wish we were faster, but, but the bulk of our, our labor force is volunteer. And so we typically build three days a week. So it, it is a little bit slower than, you know, some, some other builders.
Yes, it's not a straightforward commercial job.
It is not. It takes a little bit of magic to make affordable homeownership in, in this region right now.
What, why?
Why does it, why does it take magic? The cost of acquiring property and the cost of labor in this region and the regulatory hurdles are extraordinary.
So can, can people volunteer to work on the project?
Absolutely. We will be actively recruiting volunteers. So please, if any of you would like to volunteer some time or tell your friends and neighbors, we definitely will be looking for volunteers to get involved.
How should, how should volunteers volunteer? Who, where, what do they do to do it?
Yeah, come to our website, essexcountyhabitat.org. We have a volunteer.
Okay.
We have a volunteer coordinator. Her name is Howie and she will get you all set up. If you send her an email or you can call the Habitat office and we will get you set up. We, we always welcome new volunteers onto our project.
Can you say the name of the website again, please?
Yes, it's essexcountyhabitat.org.
Thank you.
I think we just recruited a new volunteer for the project.
Yeah, very possible.
We're, we're currently building in Wenham, so if you want to come try it out, you can cross the line.
Who's the person to talk to?
Her real name is Alexandra Howard, but she goes by Howie.
Howie, okay. Howie it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's the Habitat project in Wenham?
Right near Gordon College on Hull Street.
Okay.
Yeah, these homes will also have a deed restriction on them, which will restrict their resale value. So the estimated cost of the, the selling value on these homes will be someplace probably between maybe as low as 150 to almost 200,000 in that range.
About 30 years?
30 year mortgage, yep.
And the deed restriction will be in perpetuity and that was, that was a condition of the community preservation funds that the Affordable Housing Trust received.
That was my question, okay.
Okay, so the downside of that is that there is no financial equity if the homeowner decides to sell at some point, wants to upgrade or whatever. They, it's harder to get a large amount of money to put towards a different house. Is that essentially correct?
Yeah, that's a great point. The, there is a trade off there that is involved anytime there's a deed restriction. So what they're able to, to take out of the home in equity is the appreciation, which is typically tied to median income. So if median income has gone up 20% over that time, then the home value would go up 20% over that time. As well as the principal payments that they've been making, which if they were still in a rental situation, they wouldn't be getting any of that back. So there is the, there's the opportunity on both sides there.
Okay, so that if they do have financial equity in the home, they can get it out of the home and put it towards the new home?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's, it is not as much as, you know, if homes, market rate homes in the area have been appreciating dramatically. So market rate homes in the area might appreciate 30% in that same timeframe. So it, it is not a model for everybody, but certainly when you look at how a family making 40 to 60% of the area median income is going to afford to purchase their own. how a family making forty to sixty percent of the area median income is going to afford to purchase their own home, this is a really great opportunity.
I, I get that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
The other is, we will be preserving, this is a four-point-seven-five acre site, and will be, most of it, eighty percent will be open space.
Okay.
So, the, the only thing, and I know you have to talk to the fire department, and they may be fine with it. I guess knowing other, across the street at Canterbrook and other places, we've had to do a slightly wider road than we typically might like. So you see the twenty feet that you have. I was, I mean, if, if it's one way, it's probably fine. But that might be something they want a little wider, just so you know.
Yep.
We'll work with them on that. That was one thing that our engineers said they would immediately reach out and establish that. I think this is, is it thirty feet?
The main road looks like it's thirty, then I see twenty.
And twenty on the turnaround. I see what you're saying. Yep. We'll see what they say.
Any other questions from the board?
Can I bring a couple of things up? I wanted to ask you about the site lighting. Is there any, Megan and Don? You know, with the idea of, of trying to be as non-invasive to neighbors, that sort of thing, wanted to ask and see if there is site lighting, driveway lighting, safety lighting, those kinds of things.
There, there would be some driveway lights, because currently there are none. So on those light poles, there would be. On one side is basically where the houses are, are playing fields for Asbury Grove. And we have neighbors only right at the very front. So all of those will be in LED form of light, and we would definitely be putting hoods on them. So all the light is directed down. And on the houses, there would be the, the typical front door light.
Yeah, I think what Brian's getting at is, you want to make it, or Patrick is dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
Yes, it totally would be.
That's good. That's nice.
What about any screening from, you know, on the, on the right side of the plan, as we're looking at it here, on, you know, towards Asbury Street? Is there any thought of, of any screening there?
Well, if you look at the site, there's, there's actually a strip of land that's part of Lot One that runs between the houses.
Yep.
And that is full of trees.
Yep.
So basically, you don't see this site, except from the very entrance. And you'd have to stop on Asbury to see the homes. Nobody else will be able to see them. There are trees between us and all other residences, except for the home on Lot One.
Yeah.
And we also cited the one-story homes towards the front of the lot and the two-story homes towards the back of the lot.
I drove down Asbury Street today, and I believe that there's a sale pending on the, the house that's right on Asbury, adjacent to the driveway.
That is correct.
Is, but that, that property is not part of your property. Is that correct also?
That is correct.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with you?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's owned by the same estate as we're purchasing this from, but we're not.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was down there today too and talked to one of the neighbors. A, a nice old guy in the fenced-in yard that has all kinds of stuff in his yard.
I think my point was that this project did not impede the sale of the house on Asbury Street.
Correct.
And just to refresh my memory, the square with the triangle coming out of it, that's where the cell tower is, is that correct?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
What about roadway drainage?
Um, the engineers have said that they'll be locating the stormwater management drainage here.
What's the digging, the big, not a crane, but some kind of a digging tool?
Excavator.
At the, at the, pardon me?
An excavator?
An excavator, thank you. What's it doing down there, do you know?
Well.
To the grove.
Well, there, there is something back in the woods in the groves, not on our property.
Right, okay.
We're purchasing. That's in the back in the, in the Asbury Grove area.
So that has nothing to do with you?
No, nothing.
Okay, I did, I wasn't sure. I thought it was part of what you were doing and couldn't figure out what was going on. It was right next to the, the, not like a park area for the grove.
Correct. That's a softball field.
Yeah, thank you.
The, the lot, the property line is right here. The road is very close there.
Yeah, yeah.
And you haven't been to Conservation Commission yet?
No.
Okay.
A, a facetious question. Is that house up there that's gonna get torn down, is it haunted?
We'll let you check that out for us.
I'll do that. I'll put my tin hat on.
Uh, what about landscaping, Megan and Don?
We tend, keep our landscaping fairly simple and low maintenance. Certainly, one of the big priorities has been to preserve, there's a really nice silver birch tree right here. And so we're going to maintain that. Some of the trees that are back here in bad shape, and they're those big falling-down pine trees, will obviously need to come down. We don't tend to do particularly elaborate landscaping on our projects.
What was it you first said that was nice that you're gonna preserve?
Ah, there's a silver birch tree right here.
Okay, where is it on the map? Right there, okay.
Can you see, yeah.
It's right in front of the house.
Okay. I'll have to go back and take a look. I didn't notice it. And you've got a character of a neighbor on the, on the other side.
Any other site plan questions from the board?
I've got one, one question.
Sure.
The, it looks like the topographic information on that plan is the existing, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, have you done any, uh, re-study of the new topography?
So I would imagine the engineers, as part of their fully engineered set of plans, will, will include that in there, because there will need to be.
I'm just curious, uh, it's a little hard to read on, on my screen, unfortunately, but the grade change from, say, the first building on the right to the last building looks fairly substantial.
Yeah.
It's a contour line, so I.
Yep, this is at sixty-eight feet here, so this front one. And this is the lowest, I think, is at forty-eight, so about twenty feet lower there. Um, that's also part of the reason that we're going to build these units. These homes will have walkout basements in them. And these homes will be on slabs. So we're accommodating the grade change here and going to take advantage of that and create walkout basements in the homes that have three bedrooms, figuring those will be occupied by larger families who will need a little bit more storage.
Walkout basements are so wonderful.
I'm just curious what the, what the grade change might be in the driveway or in the road system.
The engineers are, are working on all of that. Yeah, absolutely.
So this is, this is really conceptual, um, yeah, review at this stage, so.
Yeah.
I just want to get a sense, because it looks like you pretty much have to take down all the trees in that area and do some re-grading, I guess, to make this work.
The thing about this, Neil, is this is a, I, as somebody said, a cursory review.
Yeah.
Because we really only get to look at it as a courtesy. And this was done probably ten, twelve years ago, when the, when we were actually talking about doing.
Oh, I see, okay.
Forty, forty Bs. We put together a, a policy that just said any forty B should come before the planning board for just a preliminary, just so we know what's going on in terms of the whole land use planning in town.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this gets a full review by the zoning board. You know, once it's, once it's all ready with full plans.
Yeah, one of the elements of that that I expect that we'll need to do is to hire some peer reviewers to look at the drainage plan.
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't ZBA do that, or are we gonna do that as part of it?
Well, I, I, given that the zoning board of appeals is, is the, the primary review entity, I would, they would be the, the contract entity that I would need to use. So, um, you know, if the planning board has drainage concerns, that should be part of the list of items that the board puts together as part of their recommendations to send to the ZBA.
Yeah. Yeah, so we should, now unless there's more pertinent questions, we should then develop the list you just mentioned of, of our concerns that we can then send to the zoning board for, you know, their consideration. So drainage would be one.
Road width.
Road width, yeah, that's fire department, but yes, something to look at.
Lighting. That's pretty much it.
It's more or less it, yeah. Preserving trees.
Are we being bombed?
Oh, sorry, that was just me. My bad, my bad.
Life on Zoom. Tricky for all of us.
Okay, I think we're, are we done?
Think so. And just for others that are on here, I mean, it's obviously SCO, the zoning board for full review. It has to go to Conservation Commission, since they're in the wetlands buffer, and has to go to Board of Health for the septic system. And as Patrick said, we, we only have a cursory review.
Um, there is the existing right-of-way to the cell tower, so that's, has to be considered in conjunction with the, the driveway issues.
Well, there, there's a permanent easement there.
Yes, yes, for the cell tower.
Yeah, that, that gets worked out with the cell tower owner.
Back to septic, will each building be having its own septic? Or is there gonna be?
No, as you can see in the picture, it's shown in the center.
Those two.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Because this is the first, I didn't see it before, so, thank you.
So assumably, these front three buildings would be on this septic and these back two buildings, which each, each home here has three bedrooms in it, would probably be on the septic, but they're, they're finalizing the capacity of those now.
Okay. And is that other section that looks the same way? Is there a second leaching field there? Right there, yeah. That one.
Yes.
Yeah, she just, she just said there's two systems for.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
All the units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're done.
Yeah, any other questions? Okay, so Patrick, I think we have. We need, we need to mute everybody that's not part of the board.
Jesus.
So what I'll do, Brian, and board members, is I'll prepare.
We need to get rid of this guy.
Our discussions, uh, and bring that back to the board and then send that to the ZBA, once the planning board has, uh,
Patrick, you suck.
Patrick, get rid of this guy, please. It's not, he's not part of this.
Brian, you suck.
Patrick, can you get rid of him?
Rick, you suck.
I am not sure how to get him out of here.
You can't mute, unmute me.
I think we should go ahead with the town planning.
When, when it does come to the drainage, we've, uh, we're incorporating a lot that was already done with the cell tower when they put that road in. So the little drain, there's a little drainage ditch down by the three, uh, the, the three-bedroom units. There's a little retaining pond there, so that'll be maintained. And, uh, so I think we ju, we'll just have our properties that, and they'll be run into two areas that will be shown on the final engineered plans, so you'll be able to see those.
Patrick, if I stop sharing, does that help you at all in managing the?
Uh, I have him managed.
Okay, great.
Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Now, what are we looking at?
Patrick, he, he, it's managed participants. You gotta get rid of them.
Please don't get rid of me. I'm really enjoying this here. It's just Sean Poole.
Thank you.
It's been a while since we've had a Zoom bar.
I did want to remind everybody that the other forty B project that was being proposed by Harbor Light Community Partners is not going to be presented tonight, but it will be at the, uh, the fourth meeting of the planning board.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hey, what's next on the agenda?
So.
Go ahead.
You have board business, one of those items is to discuss Casey Ryder's interest on being a associate member to the planning board. And thank you, Casey, for being with us tonight.
Thank you. That was my first experience with Zoom bombing, so it's already been pretty interesting.
Oh, you haven't seen anything.
Compared to the first.
Yeah. Want me to go ahead and introduce myself for the group?
That'd be great.
Okay, um, so my name's Casey Ryder. I am a resident of Hamilton. I've been living here for a little bit less than two and a half years. Prior to that, I was living in Salem, and I am originally from Andover, Mass. So from Massachusetts my entire life. I did go to college in Western New York, but for the most part, I've lived in Massachusetts. Um, I work at a company called Boston Private Bank and Trust, which is located, or headquartered in Boston, but we have locations in New York, Florida, California. It's a private bank geared towards primarily high net worth individuals, high net worth companies. We also have a wealth man. Um, we also have a wealth management arm of the bank. I work in risk management, specifically focused on operational risk and third-party risk, and third-party risk or vendor risk supplier risk management, um, is what I've spent most of my career in so far. Um, I have two young kids, they're in daycare, so I don't really have a lot of connections to the town right now. Um, I know for most people, that tech, that, that generally starts when their kids start going to school and they make those connections. I really like enjoy, um, I enjoy volunteering my time, finding opportunities in my spare time when I can help out. And so I was looking to, um, you know, I was looking for ways to both connect with people in Hamilton as well as volunteer my time and help out where I can. And so this is one of those opportunities that I saw come up when I was, I'm kind of doing my due diligence on the town of Hamilton's website.
Right, well, you would, uh, on the planning board, um, is probably the most central and most, uh, influential, um, board in town, because it really deals with land use. Everything from people subdividing a small piece of property to build a house to what's coming in front of us is a proposed, um, fifty unit senior housing project on, on sixty acres, which is, um, you've probably already seen signs around town saying, save Chewbacca.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, it goes from the mundane to the, um, to the very intense of public and technical process, so, um, uh, uh, I say this, um, with some sense of humor, because you have to maintain a sense of humor in this job, is you almost have to be a masochist to do this. Because you can become the focal point of some, um, some ire of neighbors, of butters, who think that, um, that, you know, uh, they obviously have very legitimate concerns, but think that the planning board many times uh, inhuman and doesn't consider their rightly, no, their rightly consider their earns, though we do, through a very public and transparent process. So I just want to give you sort of background.
Yeah, that makes sense. I can understand that. Coming from a risk management background, you know, nobody likes you either. You have to make those tough decisions, and so a lot of the first line business units, you know, they want to do what they want to do, and when second line risk management comes in and tells them they can't, um, you know, it's kind of that same perspective. I'm sure it's not on that same scale, but I understand, you know, the perspective that you're coming from.
Yeah, one of your branches is in North Beverly, correct?
Yep, that's correct, right across from the hardware store.
Yeah. And there's, I, I know somebody, and I can't think of his name, works also for your company, for your bank.
Okay.
Let's stick to questions for, uh, you know, that are relevant here, please.
Yeah, thank you, you're right.
Um, so one question I have, and I, I know I asked this last time of, of, of Emile too. Um, you know, once in a while, we have a, you know, elected member that, um, decides to leave the board before their term is up. Um, are you willing to, you know, jump into that role, um, and then potentially run for that spot at the, at the next election?
Uh, yeah, I actually don't know how long the term is, but I was looking at this as a long-term commitment.
The terms are three years.
Okay.
Well, for, for a full member.
Okay.
Yeah, and you might want to describe the process of how somebody goes from applying to becoming an associate.
Yeah. You, oh, yeah, okay, so, yeah, you, you sent in your application, obviously, that's why you're here. So from, you know, from this point, um, you know, once the board is done here and asking you questions, we will, uh, potentially take a vote, and then that gets forwarded to the Board of Selectmen, who will also take a vote. Um, I mean, typically, they, you know, will follow our lead, but it does have to go through them. Um, so that would happen, you know, assuming we vote tonight, um, at their next or the following uh, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, they, they would have that on their agenda.
Then, and then you would jump in as an associate.
Right.
And, and, and on special hearings, and maybe, Brian, you can correct me, um, especially what's coming up with, um, Chewbacca, if, um, and this is where associates are very important. Um, they actually become, I think, part of the process, and they're listening. And if a member misses more than two meetings, and that associate has certainly been at the meetings, and they can vote on that, um, project, if I remember correctly. Is that right, Brian?
That's correct, yeah, assuming they've been to all the meetings, they can, uh, they can vote on that, yes.
Yeah, so.
That's one of the main reasons to have the associate members.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I don't, not only will you, can you jump in when, if, if somebody resigns, but if there's a conflict interest, or they miss more than two meetings, and they can make them up, well, it's more than two meetings, then the associate becomes a voting, key voting member, oh.
I thought it was only on special permits, not everything.
That's what I said.
Special.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, thank you.
Yeah, but we obviously want, you know, your input as well on, on any other topic that we're discussing. It's not that you just have to, you know, sit there and be quiet and, and watch us, you know, the whole time, uh, unless it's a special permit, so. Um, there's, there's obviously other things that we do, set plan reviews, and all of this. Um, subdivisions, um, in our plans, there, there's all kinds of things that we do, you know, and getting into bylaws, we've been working on a bylaw for the last number of months, um, so, you know, all those zoning bylaws are, come through the planning board. So, and we're getting into, we'll be seeing a master planning process as well that the planning board is part of.
I think what Brian's trying to tell you, Casey, is that you have to study our bylaws and really get up to speed on, um, land use planning. It's, it, it, there's a lot to learn.
I'm, I, I'm sure.
It's like any other code, you read it once, and then you go back and read it again, and then you're always surprised with what's in it that you missed the third time you read it. So it, it is, um, it, it's a process of learning all the, the, the different types of activities that we do, and, um, the special permitting, would you agree, Brian and Rick, since you have them, and, and also Richard, i- is, you know, quite complex and involves public hearings and, uh, obviously, emotions can run high, uh, surrounding, uh, certain projects.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, as we know, in this town, I mean, you've only been here, you know, two, two and a half years, but, you know, how do I say it? A lot of people don't like development near or right next to them, right? So there's obviously, anytime something happens, there's obviously, you know, butters and, and neighbors and, um, you know, concerned citizens, uh, for any development that is, is going on nearby them or throughout town, so. Um, you know, as Rick said, there's, you know, things you have to deal with i- as a board member, and, you know, hopefully, put a motion aside and, you know, look, look at what our bylaws have to say, and look at what the mission of the planning board and, and that certain, uh, bylaw is, and and base it on that as much as possible. And, you know, luckily, with special permits, you know, as Patrick said earlier, we, um, you know, have the ability to hire peer review engineers to look at, you know, all the engineering that's been done on, on a various project, um, you know, whether it's drainage or, or, you know, even lighting, or wha, whatever it is, um, w- we have that ability to kind of have a check on, on, you know, the applicant's engineer, when, and none of us on this board right now are really engineers, so it's nice to be able to have that. Um, and it's at the applicant's, uh, expense as well, so, um, you know, we, we, we typically do that for a number of things on a special permit, uh, depending on the scale of it, but, um, so, that's, that's, that's one way that, you know, we feel better about certain things, and public feels better about certain things, that someone else has checked things over, so, um, but yeah, there, there's a fair amount that goes into it.
Does anybody have any other questions?
So, we haven't scared you away yet?
No, not yet. I have two young kids.
Yeah, well, okay. Sometimes you'll have to multiply that by twenty, and you'll, you'll know what worked.
Yeah, I'm sure. I actually, today, I just had to present to the risk committee of the board of my company, so it was like, great practice for this tonight.
Okay, well, we could always use, uh, financial analysis, uh, some, some of these projects, and especially some of the bylaws that we're working on can get complex, and we definitely could use somebody that's, uh, has strong, um, ability to get into detailed financial analysis.
Yep. Yeah, I, you know, I don't work a lot on the finance side in terms of accounting, um, but, or treasury, but I am, you know, from a day-to-day basis, I have to look at things with an analytical mindset and look at a lot of data and detail and make risk-based decisions. Um, so I don't lo, know if you're looking for somebody with a particular background or with a particular skill set, um, because obviously, like Marnie mentioned, there's, there's a lot that goes into this, there's a lot that needs to be aware of. Um, but I do feel that if, if I don't have that particular subject matter expertise or skill set that you are looking for in a candidate, I am a very quick learner, and I do, you know, in my normal day-to-day business as usual activities, I do look at things with an analytical mindset. I have to be very detail-oriented, um, so I do feel confident that I would be able to, to be a good addition to the committee.
Yeah, I, I think it's important for this board to have a, uh, a varied background of people, uh, with varied experiences and, you know, not just have, you know, a whole board of engineers, or a whole board of architects, or a whole board of attorneys, right? So it's, it's good to have a cross-section of the community, and it's good to have, uh, you know, you know, again, even just different age range, you know, whatever it is, um, varied experiences, so, um, which I think we have right now, which is great, so, uh, having your, and having a financial background, I think would be good. Um, and an analytical mind is always good as well, so I, I think it'd be, uh, I think you'd be a nice addition to the board.
The planning board, um, appeals to a variety of people. Uh, you, uh, if you may find it of interest that our former chair of the planning board, or a former chair, was actually a divorce attorney.
Okay, good to know.
And, and a quite, you know, capable, uh, chair of, uh, the planning board for a few years in that.
No, hi, yeah, hi, his ability to kind of moderate meetings, you know, was, was fantastic, and you know, keep meetings at bay, and, you know, even, you know, two sides against one another, it was, it was, it was pretty impressive.
Well, I'd like to suggest, unless other people have, um, uh, questions, is that, um, I, I'd suggest we take a vote, and I personally feel comfortable having Casey, um, as an associate. I think she has a lot to offer, new perspective and different perspective, so, I don't know how others do.
I'm fine with that.
Same, I'm, I'm from completely green background as far as planning boards go. Oh, that's like, I jumped in quick, and it's been a ride, but learned a lot on the fly and doing a lot of reading. You know, there's nothing to say you can't do this, just because you haven't done it yet.
That's right, Cory came in cold as a write-in.
Got him by two votes, I believe.
So I'd like to make a motion then, that we, um, vote to support, um, Casey's, uh, appointment as an associate to the board and forward her name to the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Rick?
Uh, Rick Mitchell, I.
Marnie?
Uh, Marnie Crouch, I.
Cory?
Cory W, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
And Brian Stein is an I as well. So Patrick, can you, uh, basically prepare the same letter you did, uh, for Emile, and, uh, I'll sign it, and we can get it over to the Board of Selectmen?
That I can.
So, just, just so Casey, so you understand, is probably the Board of Selectmen will a- ask both Emile and you to come before them and, um, ask you questions about your background and, um, why you think you're qualified and, um, so, just be prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. Do you want me to stay on? Do you want me to stay on, or?
Your call.
Up to you, and we're just gonna go over minutes and, you know, whatever else Patrick has.
I'll, I'll stay on just to observe. I'll mute myself.
Okay, great. Um, so, real quick, before we get to minutes and so forth, I, I don't know if you saw my text, I, I got a text from someone who was in touch with, uh, and a butter over at Canterbury Brook and couldn't get on, um, the call tonight to talk about, uh, the Habitat project. Um, so, and that was one, one or two people, so there may have been more, I don't know if you've gotten any um, emails or calls, Patrick, but, um.
I, I did, um, I actually got one from Larry Smith. Uh, he had been contacted, I notified him that, uh, that project next door to him, the Harbor Light Community Partnership Project, uh, was not going to be before the board tonight, but would at the, uh, May the fourth meeting.
Right, right, I'm, I'm just wondering if there was anything regarding, if there's anything regarding, um, the Habitat one. Yeah, she didn't say which project it was for, but I'm just wondering if we should, uh, what we want to do about that, since they weren't able to get on the call, i- if, if it was in fact for Harbor, or for, um, Habitat.
Well, if the, if they do have a question, they certainly can contact, um, Patrick, or, um, um, Habitat for Humanity, and, you know, it is a public process. And every, all the information that was presented tonight and other information, it's public information, so, uh, if they're listening, or, obviously, they're not listening to this, but I think it's recorded and will be available on Hamilton, Lenham, uh, cam. So.
Yes, yes, you know, and, and you're right, there will be, obviously, the zoning board hearings for the project, that they can voice their opinion, so yeah, I'm not as, as concerned as a, as a typical meeting, but.
And, uh, you know, as I had mentioned earlier, I'll be bringing to the planning board at your next meeting, uh, the memo rec, recommendation of the listed items that we talked about tonight.
Okay.
And they can input there as well.
Okay. Great. Um, so you, you had sent out some minutes today, Patrick, from our.
My April sixth.
Yes. Has anybody had a chance to review those, or should we wait till next meeting?
I haven't looked at them at all.
Okay.
They're more than usual.
I have not either.
Yeah, all right, yeah, we, we can wait till next time.
Um, I, I actually, um, did review them, and maybe if I, I know. Uh, I could send a few, uh, my comments to Patrick, and maybe, um, you know, the, the, um, the questions that I had could be answered, and, and so, uh, it could recirculate another set that, that might have uh, some corrections. There, there was a mix-up in a certain sentence that really had to be fixed, and so if I do that, um, maybe we could get it turned around, and so at the next meeting, uh, they can fly through.
I think that makes.
Right.
Without any comments from me.
So if it's Marnie approved.
And I always have comments about the meeting.
If Marnie approved, then it'll be good.
Great, thank you, Marnie.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Patrick?
That's it for me.
Great, oh, okay. That was easy. Most meetings aren't this short, Casey, just so you know.
This is a short meeting.
Well, just, I would, Pat, just so, some of you know this, but others don't. The HDC, in, in the support of Pat Shannon, Assistant at the Town Manager, submitted a $50,000 proposal to the Mass Office of Business Development for a multifaceted marketing and outreach campaign for downtown businesses. And we were, we found out one day that we were awarded the grant. So that's good news for the businesses and shop local. So there'll be a combination of mailings and probably be doing a reopening of the business district at the end of summer, the street there probably closing, we're on Ave. So that was good.
That is good news.
Congratulations.
Pat Shannon, he's a, he's a good guy.
That's not what I hear.
He does a good job for the Affordable Housing Trust. I can attest to that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and you as well. See, Casey and Emile, just so you know, Marnie is head of the Affordable Housing Trust as well. I'm on head of the Hamilton Development Corporation, which is building the 18-unit affordable housing, market rate affordable mixed-use project at Willow Street. So, and they're deep into it.
Well, I can, I can relate that Casey came before the Affordable Housing Trust and we only had one opening and two candidates. And because Casey indicated that she had interest in serving on the planning board and the Open Space Commission, and I think there was another board, I, I asked her if she would consider conceding a position on the Affordable Housing Trust so that we wouldn't have to make a decision between two really excellent candidates. And she generously agreed to do that. So I'm really pleased that she would be joining us on the planning board where we have two positions and don't have to make such hard decisions. So thank you for that.
So what would be good, I'm just thinking out loud here, when Emile and Casey go before the Board of Selectmen, it would be good. But maybe Marnie, I don't know, maybe one other planning board member to, oh, go and support them? So they aren't just showing up cold in front of this official body.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on who it is, I could probably do that.
Anyway, that's.
Great. All right, well, there's nothing else. I think we can, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So just to cut, before we do, and you know, I'm always the first to go for adjourning. Patrick, you mentioned that we are not going to see the Chobaco Woods application probably until end of May, early June?
Yeah, I've been advised by their council that they're thinking June will be the earliest that they'll be submitting anything to the planning board.
Okay, very good. Now, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that motion. Oh, wait, two seconds.
My way.
Okay.
I'll be third if necessary.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, Corey?
I.
Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
Rick?
Rick Mitchell, I.
And Brian Stein is an I as well. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Emile.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good night, all.